The Revolution. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the special meeting of the City Council of the city of Southfield for Monday, April 23rd, 2012. And welcome to the call. Thank you. Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Furcass.
Here.
Mr. Cyberg.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Lance.
Here.
Mr. Frazier, Mr. Seemore.
Yes.
You have six numbers. Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is under communication, the request for recognition, recognition by Ms. McNeese. Um, I guess we could. I think I will just, well, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll just go through a couple things. A policy that we, we give outside people, we'll put our communication at the end, so I apologize.
It is okay.
Apologize, Mr. Moss.
Well, hers is in specific to one of the items that we're going to discuss. I don't know if I want to put anything-
Well, she's going to get a chance, she's going to get a chance.
Okay.
We're just going to look at the end. I apologize.
Well, that's all right. My kids are downstairs waiting for me, so I thought I'd be able to be there. That's okay.
Hmm? Who has to? You know, it's fun. All right, we have a, this time on the agenda is 2012 Face-to-Face Exhibit. I have a good speaking. All right.
Through the chair, tonight we have Ms. Molly McNeese, SRAC art teacher for the Southfield Public Schools. I'd like to make a brief presentation on the school district's plan for the 2012 Face-to-Face Exhibit for your honorable body, and she'll be available to answer any questions after her presentation. I'm going to get queued up right now.
My name is Molly McNeese, and I'm the art teacher at the Southfield Regional Academic Exhibition. And I'm co-chairing this year's project, and I was chair of last year's 2011 Inside Out Project for the Face-to-Face Project with the art teacher Lisa Herman, who's the art teacher at Levy. I'd like to share with you, for some of you who don't know the work of JR, JR is an international installation artist who uses photographs in the community to have a conversation between the community and the photograph. His work is displayed all around the world, and he was given last year on March 4th, the 2011 TEV Prize, which is $100,000 to Change the World. And when he was given the prize, he asked the world to join him in a collaboration, if you will, between the community and the people of their community to paste photographs in their community. So these are photographs from around the world. This is in Princeton, in Arizona, and these are the ones, when he asked for the world to join him in this project, to have a conversation without words with the community on the people there. And it is put up with glue, and sometimes it's put up with tape. This is in Pittsburgh at a high school. And all around the world, you can look on the Inside Out website to see all the faces in all the communities, and they're saying different things to different people. And it's really a conversation between the photograph and the viewer. And this is the new modern art. This is one he put up a few weeks ago in New York City. The artist here is from France, but he travels often to New York and to Los Angeles to put up the photograph. All over Michigan, there were photographs displayed in communities, and this is an example from Holland. So on a 500-year-old building, we have modern art. And the art here is only meant to be displayed for a small amount of time. It's installation art, meaning to install and then to take. Sometimes they're up for years, but others, like our project from last year, some were up for only 30 days because the wind and the rain does have an effect on it, which is also part of the beauty. Toronto, and they use Just a Smile. Minnesota, and the high school borrowed the fire truck. And sometimes they would place them on the beach and cover the edges with sand and then photograph them as a, just an hourly installation. Chicago. And in Philadelphia. Now, I wanted to share with you, because the Southfield City Council did support our project from last year, and we are so grateful, we wanted to come back and say thank you, and to show you the results of our project. When we started out, we started out with 135 photographs, and 35 were displayed across the street in a beautiful manner on, on the posts. And you can see everybody from all walks of life, the teachers, the parents, the grandparents. We took three days and we set them all up on easels that were built by our maintenance department at Southfield Public Schools. And we had all types of schools from our community. We had Yeshiva Beth Yehuda School, Akiva School, and this year we've invited Southfield Christian School to join our project. This is one of my students. And as you can see, everybody was involved pasting. And part of it was just the experience of putting glue on the paper. And as you can see, everybody worked together as a collaboration. And they were quite beautiful once they came up. This is across the street. And there she is putting her own photograph up. And to join the globe in a worldwide outdoor art exhibition was tremendous for our students. And in fact, I have some wonderful news to share with the Southfield City Council. JR, the artist who won the TED Prize, was so impressed with us, he asked us to join him because an English filmmaker is making a full-length feature documentary film on the global project, and has asked to include our Southfield young children from all of Southfield into the project. So we are now going to be in a global, international, full-length feature documentary film. And then, of course, the library has the most beautiful atrium, and we were so pleased and honored to be there for the 30 days. And two, over 2,000 people come into our library every week. And they were so wonderful, and Mr. Daveiewing was so helpful in displaying them so beautifully inside the atrium. And just finally, these are some of the images that were shown last year. And you can see just from an instant, the joy that, that, well, not that demand right there, but, but they're, they're fun to look at, and they evoke emotions from, from the viewer. And that's what art is, invoking song, invoking emotion, starting a conversation, seeing the faces. I had students drive by, some of my older students in high school, drive by every day out of their way just to see their face on the side of the road. I had parents stop, grandparents stop to walk around. It slowed down traffic on LaSha Road. We just had so many emails, positive emails, positive thanks. And the only negative one that I heard was, my co-chair Lisa and I were pasting, and we were fixing some of the edges that had just ripped a little bit, and the Southfield Public Schools dispatcher got a call from a very frantic grandmother who is reporting that somebody was trying to steal the photograph, and she was going to jump out of her car and stop us, and, and Southfield said, "It's okay, it's just the, just the, our teacher's just fixing a corner." So we were just thrilled that, the community really embraced it, and we're just so thankful, and we wanted to share, share what happened with our project. And we would like this year's permission to use the site again from across the street. This year, we would not need any Southfield donation of the time. Last year, we had M.Dot Health in digging holes to put up the posts. But as you can see from our easels, it would be much easier to just set the easels out, and then after possibly a 30-day period again, we could just fold them up and put them in the back of a trailer and have it quick and easy, and very simple. So if you have any questions, I've brought two of my art teachers with me, Ms. Lisa Patini and Ms. Julie Wolf. Ms. Patini works at Stevenson Elementary, and Ms. Wolf works at Vandenberg World Culture School. And then I've brought the head of the art teachers, Principal Paula Woodad-Lycey, who's the principal of Thompson Middle School, here, here with us tonight, with her helper.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yes. The, the letter that went to the city center group originally, do you definitely have a copy of that?
Not with me, but I can make sure that-
Neither that's mine. I understand it's not in anybody's, uh-
Originally from last year?
Yes. I mean, it's important to have because, and let me tell you about my concern is-
Yes, sir.
The program, the project, I have no problem with, it's great. But the request was made of the city center group, and they authorized up to $5,000 for the project.
Yes, sir.
And nobody knows where the bills are, nobody's seen. I mean, I've asked for the bills, I've asked for the expenditures that the city had incurred, and, and how many individuals who put in the, put in anything, you know, the program that, across the street especially, on the corner Civic Center Drive in Evergreen, where they were put way back because the owner wanted it away from the road.
Uh huh.
And there were three in there. But the letter stated that, that at least from last year, there was no responsibility that you were taking, there was any insurance, or there was nothing that was to guarantee that if there was any injury on city property, that you would be holding for it, or you would have the insurance for it.
Well, thanks, sir, for bringing that up. This is the first I've, I've been aware of this, but I will make sure that I talk with the park, City Parks and Rights Department about this.
But see, when it came, when it came to council last time, I'm sure Mr. Cyberg took it to city center. That's what-
No, I didn't.
Whoever steered them to that, went to the city center group first, and, and they approved it in up to $5,000. The city center, center money can only be spent in the city center area.
Uh huh, yes.
And of course, this, the pictures were everywhere.
Yes, the city center money that went for those pictures were only in the city center area. We also received funds from private donations and from the Southfield Public Schools, and from the Yeshiva Beth Yehuda School and Akiva Schools.
But I'm only interested in the money that the city put out, and the employees that were putting signs up.
Well, I can have that information on speaker.
In other words, I'm very concerned about where we are sitting as far as the city financially now.
Okay, but-
And, and, you know, you see the DIA, for example.
Yes.
And, and it's not your fault, I'm just wondering why nobody steered you to, you know, if people rent the front lawn, you know, for an event, they have insurances, and I think there's a contract, and things that they are responsible for, so that we're not-
That's a very good point. I agree with you.
So we don't, so we don't get involved in any, any litigation.
Yes, sir, I wouldn't want that to happen, but-
And the other thing that I don't see a change in is that, where is the publicity that what you see is what it is? In other words, is, Art Festival, or whatever, you know, in other words, there should be some kind of a, of a publicity to let people who drive by know what they're seeing, or why is it there? Because there was a lot of questions, you know, why are those signs all over the place?
Yes.
And there was nobody to answer because most people didn't know.
Yes, well, last year, we were featured on Channel 2 News, Channel 7 News, of all our local newspapers, the Southfield Sun and the centric. And this year, we are developing, which is in the plans, a QR, which is the digital square you see on advertisements. And that QR, if you scan it with your phone, that will bring you to a website. Southfield Public Schools is having one of our art teachers develop a website that the QR would go directly. We also paste, posted boxes that realtors use in front of houses that are up for sale, and we had flyers in there as well as the businesses who were involved in, in the project also.
I went looking for the pictures, and there was nothing that I could find or see that, if I wasn't a councilman, and I didn't go to the city center meeting, I probably would not have known why those pictures were-
Right, but also, that's, that's what's really great about JR's work and, and the project, is that you start asking questions, and you start going into the schools, and you start saying to your neighbor, "What is this about?", and you start that conversation. And that's what's the beauty of this, this art project, because art becomes this way of talking about different difficult things, and, and having a conversation start about the art and our, our children.
As seen on your examples, other than the library, they're all in unison with the building, or tied to a building, or something as opposed to just right along the street.
Uh huh.
In other words, it's totally different than the way they have been shown, they have been, based on office building walls, or business walls, or whatever.
Yes.
They're not just endlessly on, on the street.
Yes.
So I, I guess, I am still, I, in other words, DIA put up, as you know, around the city, they put up pictures from the DIA, on artists-
Yes, they're Inside Out projects.
And, and they had, they had have a contract, and they also had, you know, flyers and things, I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
Uh huh, I am.
And so, so I just think that everything should be the same, everyone who gets permission to use the city property or their rights away, you know, there should be some kind of a policy and guidelines to follow. And there doesn't seem to be one in this case. And I think the attorney, I think that there has to be some kind of liability insurance if something should happen on city property or on, on the rights away, that's recovered.
We don't want to do that, it's in agreements, right.
We don't have an agreement.
We do not have an agreement at this point.
I'd be willing to talk with the City Parks Department about that.
Otherwise, good luck, I think that-
Or the, or the, or the city, or whomever, because I'm, I'm, I'm the art teacher at, you know, the-
Well, that's why I said, somebody should have guided you through it, and I was surprised they didn't have to.
Well, we've, we've had a lot of lessons learned about the project, and the reaction to the project has been overwhelmingly positive for the city and the businesses, and-
But that isn't the problem.
Right, I'm-
The problem is that we have to make sure that we aren't sued.
Yes, yes, sir, and I do not want, absolutely do not, I'm with you, I don't want the city to be sued. And we all work with anyone, and even, sir, your, your guidance to, to help us with this project.
I don't, we set the rules, we, we set the rules.
And-
These are the requirements, reduce the contracts.
Okay, well, whoever, whoever would be doing that, I'd be willing, and I know my co-chair, she coaches track tonight, so she will, she's on her way. And we're, we're just very, very grateful for the work.
And we are being put across the street on the city center group, do you know it at this point?
Um, not right now, we're, we're still talking, we, we wanted to speak with, with you, you all first. But the schools, we, we plan to put a picture on each school, and in front of Southfield High School is such a, a positive, that, that's, that's in the plan right now.
I see Mr. Cyberg putting one up. He had a good worker there.
Yes, yes. Yes, he got a little glue on his hands too.
He wasn't too good with the glue, he wasn't too good with the glue, but-
Well, I, I yelled at him at the proper moment, but-
He kept in line, yeah.
That's right. But what's exciting is this year, we're including our preschools, Bussey Center and Magnolia Center, which feeds into our Southfield Public Schools, and they're overjoyed, and I plan the, the busing, the company that runs our public school buses, has agreed they're going to take my students from SREC, who are very excited to be bused to the preschool to help teach how, what this project is about to the little people, and we're going to have a little pizza date. So we're very, very excited about that partnership.
It'd also be good to have some kind of a pamphlet to talk about the artist a little bit, so people get to know, you know, what made him famous, and how he is famous, and how his works have been shown.
I think, again, this is the lessons learned from last year.
Oh, yeah.
We're, we're just really, we're really excited about this year's project, and from pamphlets to the new QRs, to just even the students knowing what it's about now, they're asking who's going to be in the photograph this year, and, and the principals are asking, when are we going to put this stuff? We plan to page May 17th, 18th, and 19th and 20th, which is a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We took three days to page last year, so we're just kind of adding on another day, just to make sure we have everything for our parents and our students, and everything's best.
I don't know, there's no other question.
All right, Ms. Jordan.
I, I agree with Mr. Furcass in terms of the policies that we've used in the past when someone puts, uses the front lawn. So I think the school's attorney should probably draft any agreement that we would use as opposed to relying on our little policies. And that should be there. The burden should go on them rather than us trying to put together.
We have standard type of-
Yeah, sure we have, but-
So it would be fine.
That's fine, sure, sure.
My question, my other question has to do with physical locations.
Yes.
So you're saying across the, leaving Civic Center.
The Civic Center was, no, I'm sorry.
The other side is.
Correct.
And each of the public schools, each of the high schools?
Yeah, each school will be displaying their students on their property, and some businesses have asked us, like last year, to be, to be part of it.
So we're blanking the city, or are we looking at targeted areas as we did?
We're looking at a targeted area in front of Southfield High School, and using some of the fence lines in front of Southfield later up on 13 Mile, which is a really nice viewable area, and the Bussey Center kids are very excited to put that, put that up as a major area. But right now, we're, my co-chair and I are looking at how many photographs we have, how many we're putting on the schools, and this is all right now in discussion, where should we put it, and we're talking with the parents and the students and our principals on logistics. And that's also, should be a question for my boss here, Ms. Paula Woodad-Lycey, the principal who's in charge really of all of this for our project.
So in terms of the timeframe that's going to be displayed, because you're going to work on it the weekend of May 17th.
Yes.
Now, when will they actually be seen in the community, and for how long?
Um, last year, when we placed them up, after about 30 days, they really started to wear and tear. So if they were part of the city, and if the city project put up across the street, a 30-day window would be just perfect for us, for that. And then with the public schools, we had ours up for about two months, and with the wind and the rain and the sun, after about two months, Mr. Cyberg did give me a call and say, "It was time for, for them to be brought down", and which we did, and it was very easy with the collapsible easels. And Chad's was our nine-foot-by-12-foot portrait of our second grader on the side of the university, and maintenance took him down. But with just the glue and water, it just comes right off, there's really no environmental damage, it's just a matter of picking up the easels that are reusable, and, you know, how long they're up. Some of the ones that JR has put on the Palestinian-Israeli wall have been up for five years now, and they look like, you know, just a little wind damage, but they're, they're still up there.
Yeah, my concern, I did see them last year at the 10 Mile, around that area, which is right next to Southfield High, is that they did look very, very undesirable after they were beat up by the wind and the rain. Is there any way that you can use better materials, either, I know it may be more costly, but it may look a little bit more better in terms of laminated materials, or some way that the paper doesn't peel?
Right, well, what we're using this year is, we're going to use the wallpaper paste instead of our flour and water glue mixture. And part of the project is, is that they, they're, they're meant to be worn, they're meant to be only up temporarily, and, and that's part of the process with this material, with this, with the photograph.
So then maybe would you stay consistent with the public schools, taking them down within 30 days, because if they stay up here for 30 days and they're ready to go down, it visually doesn't look good if they're still up someplace else, and they're beginning to peel and to go-
Well, that's, that's really great, that's something that I can talk to my, Ms. Woodad-Lycey about, and, and the people who are in, you know, the Southfield Public Schools, that we won't really-
They would seem more of a uniform project, they, they go up at the same time, and y'all are down.
Right, and they're taken down at the same time. I'll, I'll be sure to discuss that with, this with Lycey and our superintendent, Monica Robinson.
And you didn't see that you're expanding the preschools as well?
Yes.
I would like to-
Because they, they, they wanted to be, they didn't, let me back up. We didn't know how big this was going to get last year, all I did was ask my principal to put one picture up on my building and one picture up on this premise building at Levy, and then it started to grow from there. And it was just exciting, and to be kind of part of something that just grew and grew and grew, to an international film, is just a blessing. So right now, the preschools asked us to be part of this, and we said, "Of course", because they're, they're our children of Southfield. And it'll be interesting, maybe next year, if we include adult ed, or, you know, because this is a community project, so we want to keep it small, yet confined, so that it's manageable and controllable. Because we are looking at some wonderful art teachers here who have spent countless hours on their own time, looking at photographs, talking to parents, we're not paid for this. You know, this is just an extra project that we're so proud of, and so proud to be part of.
I'll give you the name of another preschool today.
Oh, we would love that. All right, thank you.
I just had a few questions about the process by which the students are chosen.
Yes.
You know, how do, did it decide who participates? Where are the settings of the different pictures? Is it just taken kind of candidly, or is it a studio in school somewhere, a room? And how do you, how are you expanding to the non-public schools?
Um, well, the process is, is that, two weeks ago, we asked the principals and the art teachers of not only our Southfield Public Schools, but Yeshiva Beth Yehuda and Akiva, and we've included the, I'm sorry, I've got to take my throat, the Christian School. And we said, "Just take photos of your kids, white background, some kids are just candidly taken outside on the bricks." And last week on Thursday night, we met, and for three hours, we did a slideshow of all the photographs.
I think you're getting a couple.
Oh, gosh, thank you. And, um, excuse me for one second, I've got to take a, oh, gosh, thank you so much, perfect, that's what I needed. Ah, well, so, once the slideshow was going through, you could tell, once a child's photograph came up, as, as you saw from the black and white, we would see about five photographs that would, "Ooh, look at her!", or, "Ooh, look at his expression."
Yeah.
So then we moved that file into a new file of the oohs and ahs.
Okay.
And then from there, there must have been 10 people in my kitchen, and we're, you know, projecting these on my living room wall. So out of that, that, you know, there was more than that, so we, people just kept coming over and, and, excuse me. So then out of those- So, then out of those, we would have a top thirty. And so, we've kept moving those students around. And often, our teachers would say, I don't wanna be part of the process. You pick the students.
Yeah.
So, because we know these kids. We know and we fall in love with them dearly. And...
Are some of the pictures from last year gonna be held over or is it all holding back?
No, they're all new.
Okay. Good deal. I just would say, you know, maybe even kinda take a scan of all the schools in the area. You never know, if it's a non-public school, they might wanna participate.
Yes.
But other than that, I thought last year, it made me stop and think and look at pictures so straight. Yeah.
Ms. Jordan, Ms. Delam.
Mr. Sire, does the signage, is that involved, you know, does that prevent the...
For the chair. This, the item was reviewed last year by the building official. They do not consider this any signage. They were specifically told, though, that they couldn't use or incorporate any logos. So, some of the demonstration photos that were originally proposed had like a Nike shirt or something. And we were told that that would be considered signage. But it was clear that this was not considered signage. And they're not allowed to put them in the right way. You have to have them on either private property or on the school site. If those two conditions were met, this was not considered signage at all.
The business came along and wanted to put a picture outside his store. We wouldn't allow it.
Well, again, the businesses that participated last year put the signs inside their window. And, excuse me, our...
So, I'm talking about the businesses not participating, their own business. They want to put a pic, put a picture out there and sign it. And that's prohibited.
Well, again, I'm speaking...
Where, where, there is a difference.
There's a difference if you're advertising a product.
This is advertising.
This, we determined with the sign official that this, this was not signage or this was not advertising. And as long as it did not include any logos or words.
Oh, come on. Come on. You're sending out flyers that go out on TV.
This is a, this is a temporary arty exhibit.
It could be temporary for businesses to come along.
Well, again, I, I'll defer to the sign enforcement officer, but it's clear, it's clear...
Well, I know what the sign enforcement officer's gonna do.
It's clear. And we've talked to him and the building official about this last year. As long as it doesn't include any advertising or logos and where it's located and the inside of the window, it was not considered signage at all.
The school is introducing it as their program. And a private artist, a company is putting, is putting the project to work. Fine, it's all the same.
Well, again, this is a student, a school-sponsored project. There's no businesses involved.
I have no objections to this. I'm just asking about the private businesses who wanted to do the same thing.
Yeah, I think we have to be careful. But in this limited capacity, under the guidelines that we've, you know, outlined, this is considered art and not signage.
Oh, boy. Okay, from now on, we shall see. When the business come along and wanna put a sign out in the picture and if Godella turns it down, we're gonna beat them. They're gonna get the business. It's gonna be able to put their signs up and advertise their products, just like the school is advertising their product. This is a product. You don't see the same? Or you got blinders on?
Are you asking me what my opinion is?
Well, I'm telling you.
Yes. I think this is a good thing. It's featuring our future children, our, our future of our city.
It's better this time than it was last time.
And there's...
I notice you have a different format this time, which is better, okay? Your last format was not good.
Yeah, Mr. Lance, I just wanna say, there's been lessons learned and we're trying to improve.
I agree. But there will be a conflict with the private industry on the sign.
Do you think, do you think this could be considered an exhibition? Mr. Sire, just a couple of observations. Last year, by six weeks, they started the most dog year, given normal weather. I would suggest forty days for this. It's a lot of work that goes into this. And they don't all get put up at once. But forty days is just shy of six weeks. And the interesting thing that happened last year, for instance, Channel Seven was the last one to do a report on it. And yet, every day, the Channel Seven trucks, news trucks would drive right by it at Ten Mile and Losher. And finally, somebody calls from the station and said, what is that? And why haven't we, and asked us, why haven't we done a story on it? And, you know, I turned around and said, well, I don't know why you haven't. Get over here. And so, they, they were the last, but it got a lot of very favorable publicity. And I think that the same thing would happen this year. People did come from all over to see us. It was a very nice feature on Fox News. The other thing, the only, at the time, this was, I was working and this was my department, no tax dollars were spent on this, other than in-kind, school trucks were used to transport the easels. But all of the easels, all of the paper, there was an additional five thousand dollars came from local donors. For instance, Barton Mallow donated five hundred dollars to this project. Floyd Allen, an associate for law firm, Mr. Allen, who lives in Southfield, who's a big Southfield school booster, he provided five hundred dollars for the project. Lives in Southfield, whose law firm is in the Fisher Building. And there were other small donations. So, the whole thing was done by really mostly volunteer labor as the pictures were test. And the funding, it was so direct, school budget spent on it. And interestingly, having stood out at Ten Mile and Losher, I know there were some concerns about distracting drivers. And the, actually, the opposite thing occurred. Traffic flowed on Losher. People went slower and took this in. It was, you know, usually people would go A to B and zip along. And this had, this had the opposite effect. So, I, you know, I thought it was obviously a very positive thing. And what a great thing to showcase our kids and those faces. They're precious. It was very, very gratifying and all the comments that was raised. And we're very positive about the exhibit. Mayor Vaughn?
I just have, just a concern. I thought this was a great exhibit. And I'm glad we're gonna do it again. My, my question is, as we include the private schools, I thought it was a community event because these were actually Southfield children. Those are the faces of our community. And as we expanded, and I know every school in our city has a Southfield resident. And I would think that it would be the Southfield students and, I mean, Southfield residents. So, these are our children and our community and it's our face, their faces. And I think that's kinda the way I would like for it to go. I would want it to expand to the point where this is not our children. I feel very strongly about that. It's a Southfield, it's our children, it's the face of the community. And I know for a fact, the Akiva and the Shiva and all of those have Southfield residents in the, in those schools. Southfield Christian has Southfield residents. And I, I would like for this to be a Southfield exhibit and community faces. That's just my opinion. And I don't know where you have gone with that.
I'm in complete agreement with you, Mayor Vaughn.
Ms. Delam?
I can't, all kids are present.
I can hear you say that.
Now, you received five thousand dollar donation from the city center committee. That money did not come from the individual lenders of the committee. It came from assessment on the other business. It came from a tax law that we call an assessment. We donated the assessment money, five thousand dollars. It wasn't bad.
I wasn't thinking for that. And I don't know, I have nothing to do with it.
You didn't get any, any...
No. The money that I, just to be clear, I went, I know people that work in that. I went to them, I paid them.
That's okay.
Yeah, sure, tell me when I, of course, this year, five hundred dollars. Mr. Allen, five hundred dollars.
I'm not talking, I know that.
And that's all I'm speaking about. I don't know about this other money. I didn't go use it.
You said that didn't come from any, anyone else.
I'm sorry if you misunderstood me. What I said was, no money of, that I knew about or had anything to do with, came from tax dollars.
Okay, so I'm telling you that five thousand dollars came from tax dollars. You call it a assessment. That's the new tax money.
For the chair, Mr. Lance, I just, I wanna clarify on this point.
Your version, your version, go ahead.
The city center pledged up to five thousand dollars. The actual amount was approximately eight hundred dollars. And that was reimbursed to the Parks Department, the material. That was the only money that was spent from the city center. They, the city center board felt that this was a special event. It was gonna showcase in the district. And they pledged money. Now, there was originally five thousand...
Who money is that?
It's the special assessment dollars.
That's tax money.
It's not tax money. They voluntarily agreed to participate.
Where do they, where do they take it from?
The businesses voluntarily agreed to pay.
That's tax money. The people voluntarily pay taxes too.
Well, I guess we can agree to disagree. I'm just trying to clarify the record. That all five thousand dollars were pledged.
I clarify the record too.
And approximately eight hundred dollars was spent. And that was a reimbursement to the city for materials that were incurred. And that was, that's all that was spent.
That's fine. But it was advertised that they donated five thousand dollars. That's all I'm doing.
Well, they pledged, they pledged that much.
At first I hear that there was an exchange of money. So, let them not say they donated five thousand dollars. To know I would catch it. And I still think, it's right, it's all right. I agree with the whole thing. It's better than, ten times better than last time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now, it could be a little bit odd that going tonight. But we need a contract.
I just wanna quickly clarify how this contract will read in terms of, Mr. Sire suggests forty days. And if it's gonna be forty days from what it's initially, it's tall? Or should they all go down at the same time?
Yeah.
I think they should all go down at the same time. Be placed around the city at the same time as opposed to just whenever we just see them spotted. So, we could just have...
That's what I'm suggesting. I have no control over this now, but...
I place in the city, if they're all placed at the same time and that we keep it within the forty day time.
I can refer to Mr. Crowe, but Ms. Wanacook Robinson and Ms. Wooded Lightsey are part of those decisions.
Well, we want that communicated. And I think it'll come forward with the contract.
Okay, I wanna weigh in here a couple things. You said you're all in photo?
Yes.
Okay. And you said you're going to go to other schools?
Yes, we've approached and contacted other schools.
What about the non-public schools besides the Southfield Christian and the Shiva and...
Yeah, yeah. Well, Madam President, that's one thing we disconsider. However, you're looking at, and my co-chairs in the back of the room, Ms. Herman. That's all right, that's all right.
I just wanted to respond to this.
Well, with our public schools, because I am a full-time employee of Southfield Public Schools, and I teach all day. I have two young children. Ms. Herman teaches all day and these two fine women next to me teach all day. Finals are coming up. This is not only a time management issue, but also something that we feel we can be responsible to have something, quality and not quantity. From the lessons we learned last year with printing issues and all these things, we wanted it under control. Now, next year, I think that's a wonderful idea. We can even discuss including those other schools this year. But as, as personally, making, you know, one hundred and thirty-five gallons of glue in my kitchen, you know, and to include every charter school, you know, would be, for me right now, overwhelming. But I can discuss it with my co-chairs and my, my teachers here. But right now, there's twenty students from each school.
Okay, I'm not talking about all the students because not all the students in charter schools live in Southfield. We're talking, for like, remember the table on the one hand, Southfield people that live in Southfield, students that live in Southfield. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the different schools. I think Southfield Christian, I think Akiva and the Shiva Bethy Huda, they are not all Southfield students. You know that, right?
Yes. And we noted in our, in our letters to them that we would like to see Southfield residents, I believe, in our phone calls with them. But with our...
I'm trying to eliminate, I mean, for some of the, I'm doing it up. That's gonna probably offend some of the students because, okay, well, we go to this school and we don't live here. I'm not suggesting we do it. But I think the idea that the Southfield students does make sense, even on the school, might, you know...
And for us, it did make sense. For us, it did make sense also. But because we are volunteering our time and this is a passion for us as artist teachers, to see this project come to life.
I, I know what you're saying. I really do. And I appreciate what you're saying about your schedule. But we're presenting this as a community project.
Yes.
Nobody cares if volunteers are working on it.
Right. But if, if a school came forward from the charter schools or private schools, we would welcome them with open arms and help them along this project.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna leave people out and maybe...
And we can say as an open invitation to, to those schools, if they come forward, we would certainly participate. Yes, ma'am.
And they can, they can, and volunteers in those schools to help you. But I'm not talking about you doing all this by yourself. Not at all. But if we're gonna do it as a community project, it's got to include all the, all the schools that are Southfield residents, whatever, whatever they do. So, I, the length of time, pretty much, I think, if we read on forty, forty days. What I would like to see certainly is a little more variety. You said you're gonna put them in different schools, which I think is a great idea.
Every school in Boston will have at least one photograph, at least...
Well, maybe, if you make it really interesting, if you made it kinda like a surprise, if it's very foreign, you know, it's something, you might have a different three or four. But if it's like, maybe, let people relax, you know. If you have a nice, you have a beautiful path on there by the John English Building, a little driving path. And it'd be just a nice little surprise to see them. And I'm just suggesting, I've seen a lot of layout and things like this. And I think it'd be kind of soft the way that you would, or the other ones you want to do. I mean, I was, I didn't like last year, the friends, it was so like, the friends that everybody approved, came from, right, came from...
Well, again, we're looking at manpower. And most of us are mothers with young children.
I think if you put out the call to people, maybe not this year, but if you put out the call, I think you have a lot of people wanting to help you.
Okay, well, thank you.
It would look better. It's just, it's proven and stuff. Last year was kind of, you know, it didn't quite, it wasn't what we like to see in our city.
And I would hate for anything not to represent the city of Southfield.
But the community. And we try to make everything look good. Anything that we're involved with...
But also, part of it is working under our budget with the volunteers we have. And that's the best we had at that time. And that's the best we could. We're now looking at, put it, pacing in three weeks. And, you know, twenty photographs from each school and then the, the extra photographs. So, again, this is, we're, we're doing this on our own time after school. And we're, we're working as hard as we can. And I, and I love you for that.
I appreciate that. And I don't want to be a volunteer. I'm just suggesting that for your community project, it's gotta be beyond handful of teachers.
I, I agree. And I'll bring that up with my, with my, Paul Wooded Lightsey.
So, you can make it into something a lot nicer than what it's, so we can make it something weird, delightful. We'll just put it on a corner and you can do it. Let's do it, like, like this.
Yes, ma'am.
Who had to hand?
I just say, we already have time.
Okay.
I can't see how you're gonna separate kids in our own school. Many, many of your kids don't live here in our public school. So, how can you tell a kid who goes to our school and lives elsewhere, you can't participate?
Well, sir, we have residents... Well, sir, we have residents, um...
All of a sudden, they become a resident.
No, all, our, our students are residents of Southfield Public Schools. As far as I know as a teacher.
Don't discriminate against... All right, what about the Hebrew school?
Yes, um...
You're going to have to separate the kids.
I, I know that they do for the preference, and they put out the request that it should be Southfield students.
I know, it doesn't matter, those kids are going to be just Southfield, the kids can't be taken, they don't live here.
They're low, they're Southfield hundreds.
Oh, come on.
Okay, can just around the table, make sure we have some pictures?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Cyrus?
Yes.
Uh, sorry?
Yes.
Yes, but solve the problem of, don't insult the kids that don't live here.
No.
What are you going to do? You know what you're going to do? Is you all participate, because they're going to our school.
Because they're only taking twenty of each school, is that correct? They're taking twenty of each school, they're limited, they're limited. So, everybody won't be in it, but maybe next year.
I don't think that's fair either, now.
Thank you very much.
We have to move on, when there's a...
Molly, Molly, Christian Pictures, I took it to have, and I was a programing here to look at what the A I did, maybe you get some ideas up, or if you'd like to.
Counselor, um, I deformed us with the, uh, the two in December twelfth, two thousand and eleven, to replace the Frank and Orchard Condominiums of the open market process. Uh, we have a, uh, proposal, uh, which was, uh, through our purchasing, uh, process, and, uh, this is, was from Christian Tabernacle Church of Southfield. Uh, submitted the highest offer, a hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, we want, uh, maybe, I see the property of the church, uh, and their maintenance and property and exemplary. Uh, this is a cash offer, which means that we are out of the land with this, uh, on, on this property. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, church, uh, has a knowledgeable experience contractor, who had an opportunity to interface with the moving parties, uh, in the, uh, Christian Tabernacle Church. Uh, and, uh, they are anxious to, to get started, and, uh, uh, the contractor's knowledgeable experience, uh, will, uh, have met with our building department, and will meet all the requirements, uh, of the, uh, process to put these, uh, condominiums in, uh, a condition that we can ask them to afford, the current, uh, situation. Uh, council should know that, um, when we first, uh, came to condominiums, it was, uh, under eminent domain, uh, as part of the six ninety-six, uh, freeway improvement, uh, project, uh, that, that was resulted from a number of years' work, part of the city, uh, to accomplish that. Uh, we had a goal of, uh, around seven hundred thousand, with this, uh, amount and other, uh, proceeds, uh, from previous, uh, participation on the project. Uh, we have, uh, made our goal at a sixty percent level, frankly, given what's happened in the economy, uh, over the, uh, years involved. I think this is a win-win for, for our part, and a concern that we look forward to, uh, the condominiums to improve, uh, up to, uh, our standards, and, uh, working with, uh, the bidder to, um, seek improvements, uh, in, uh, our housing stock. For that, I would recommend, uh, consideration of this proposal. We have our purchasing agent, uh, Ray Townsel here, who will direct the process. We also have guests here at the church.
Contractors up front here, the front up here.
Yeah, we have the contractor, uh, so we are ready for council consideration, uh, on this matter.
This is the, uh, city administrator, um, this is the third time, correct?
Correct.
And the two former, um, I'll call them owners, for lack of a better, uh, purchasers, um, they forfeited their, um, earnest amounts, correct?
Correct.
How much did we, um, get on that?
Uh, let's see, two fifty?
Yeah, there, there was, there was an initial purchaser, um, who walked away within the due diligence period, so they got their deposit back. There was a second purchaser that forfeited their, uh, big deposit of ten thousand dollars. There was a third purchaser who purchased them on land contract, and they paid, between their monthly payments and what they put in their down payment, they paid over two hundred thousand, and then they lost it, we, we forfeited the land contract, because they stopped making payments. So, really, this is kind of a fourth sale, um, but again, the first one, they walked away in, in a timely manner. So, over two, yeah, probably two fifty, when you combine all those amounts?
My, my reason for asking that is that, um, I think that's an important consideration. Uh, I hate to see, I'm a realist, uh, I hate to see this property go for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but when I look at the, the other bids that were submitted, uh, I'm very grateful for it. But, at the same time, um, we were involved in a public improvement, um, having another, especially for emergency vehicles, having another exit, uh, freeway exit, um, the alternative with, uh, replacing a parking structure in an office building that, uh, I mean, originally, this thing was going to cost millions. So, uh, um, I think that, um, this is a good offer, made a little sweeter by the fact that we've had forfeited money to, uh, offset our, um, our, of our investment in it. So, um, I, I plan to support it.
Yeah, we're just going to mention that, um, that we met with the purchaser and his general contractor and the building department, and went through the whole series of things, to see whether or not we would have enough experience or a general contractor that would have experience to give these things a shape. So, uh, we're pretty satisfied, and that's what's bringing it before council today.
Yeah, I know, I, I just want to chime in that I know that Christian Tabernacle, uh, has been a good neighbor in the community, and this is a good marriage, um, and I know that they're going to be sharing a driveway with the, with the, uh, Condominium Association next door, and I know we're about to hear from a resident, a member of the board, so I just think it would be good, kind of, uh, good neighborly policy, just for them to also introduce themselves to the community right next door to them. Um, so, I don't know if the potential bid recipient is here, so I'm sure they'll hear from...
The contractor, not the...
Yeah, so, I, I, they've been a good neighbor in the community, and it's worth to kind of extend the introduction to the people that you're going to be sharing that entranceway with.
I have to say that we, you know, we've been dealing with this for the last eight years, and to see a, a well-qualified purchaser take this property is great, even the fact that they're a church. Because now they're giving, uh, an opportunity to, if it's not their members, it might be other people in the community to have, um, a very nice home, because those are, once they're brought up to code, those are very nice homes that added to our community. So, I'm very, very excited to see this, um, this buyer purchasing the property, and be added, um, in a celibate condition, in a livable condition, and I think it's going to be great for the community.
Although it wasn't asked, uh, a lot to the councils, and all of it, this is because of the tax pay, for this, for this function. Uh, just want that to be...
I'm going to put my two cents in for a Christian Tabernacle church. I will give them anything they want.
Hold them to it.
You hold me to it, when I say something, you can hold me to it.
Okay.
They deserve it. Excellent, uh...
Church.
Will I call it? I don't want to say church, it's the excellent title.
Organization?
Huh?
Organization?
Organization.
Um, I, I personally know, um, the leadership of the church, but also know the commitment and same investment that they made into the campuses they have now. Um, have we presented the timeline for the investment or improvement, is the contractor not a state?
I don't...
Here, we have discussed it, uh, they're on an aggressive, uh, uh, timetable, uh, I think it'd be appropriate to...
I think we should refer to the petition, yeah.
Well, I, I want to say before, um, I just want to show on my own consent, I, my concern was, who was going to do with the construction, because I know they had a lot of volunteers for some of the work in church, and the church is beautiful, and the ground and everything, and they, I have to say, that they have really created an exemplary property in this church. And I was a little concerned when I first heard about it, because it sounded like this might be kind of a do-it-yourself kind of thing, and when they, I know, when I picked the contractor, and he was a qualified contractor, and I said, okay, my, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, because it, it, I don't know where this came from, but it sounded like it was going to be a do-it-yourself project, and I thought, that's, there's too much there for a do-it-yourself.
That was the last group.
Right. But, that, that was all I needed, they're giving a comfort level, but we have somebody that was a qualified contractor, because there is, there is law to be done, there, as you know. All right, um, what we, what we want to do is, absolutely, and who's going to speak for the church? You know, let, uh, contractors speak for you.
It will do some speaking. All right, hey. Uh, Anthony Herrera, six twenty-one, Wayne Road, West Line. Anthony Herrera. Six two one, North Wayne Road, West Line, Michigan. Well, first of all, the building's become quality of excellence. As you guys know, what they've done to the campus, um, at the church has done, done quite well. Um, this project's going to be a dozen projects, every work that's being done is going to be paid for. Every project, uh, and this project will be paid for, there will be no, um, volunteers working with us on this. Um, we're looking to make this quality of excellence, once again, we're trying to bring this up to professional level, um, a lot of professionals living in there, so the standards, quality of the work that's going to be in there, and material will be highest quality. The exterior is going to become maintenance-free, um, everything will become vinyl, we're putting a thirty-five-year shingle under roof, vinyl, aluminum around the exterior, we're getting rid of all the wood, uh, wood decks, gone concrete patios. Um, so, we're looking at long-term, we don't want to have to invest more money in this, we don't want Mr. and Ms. Mormon to invest more money in this into the future, once it's done and being maintained, that's where it's going to stand. Um, one scandal, stay two-bedroom units, uh, as they are right now, uh, the whole interior, I'm going to say ten of them, complete interior's going to be completely redone, there's, I think, three of them, uh, a lot of the interiors still, you know, drywall and such, it is still in good conditioning intact. Um, all the kitchens, all the bathrooms throughout, carpeting, all the windows, um, throughout, so the exterior is going to be beautiful, the interior is going to be even better.
Can you tell us about the kitchen?
But, okay, we're small things to that, we're going, we're going to high-quality end cabinets, probably marilat cabinets, um...
Marilat?
Marilat, yeah.
Very good.
I can't say exactly, uh...
Port, the green counter top.
Rebuilding, I'm just...
You want some great advice there? Uh, appliances will be installed and, and supply for each unit too, um, throughout, so, you know, when I'm thinking, you know, the turnovers, people bringing their stuff, they're coming to look at a professional place, uh, so they're going to want to live in, they're going to enjoy living out there, enjoy living in the community. Um, we haven't totally decided on our landscaping yet, we're kind of looking at that, changing a little bit with the landscape on the outside, it's not going to be too bad at this point, but it does need a little bit of help. We are putting in the concrete curb as being asked across the front of the building to prevent any vehicles coming from carports back into the, into the buildings. Um, all brand-new doors all the way around, a lot of work's going to be done on this project. There will be a few questions I do have for the city as we go through, because there is electrical meter on the outside of the fence line, that takes care of one of the lights that is on our property, we need nobody to, to, to handle that. And I think you guys had it put in some time ago, because, uh, I think others, uh, say it's Southfield.
Security light?
Yeah, it's a security light at the entry to our parking lot, uh, or to the parking lot. Okay, thank you. Um, as you know, and if you might have seen the inside, there's been a lot of, uh, there's flooding and stuff within the buildings, um, so once again, the basements will be totally cleared out, previous ownership that had it, they did some work in the basements, that wasn't up to show, it was moved in. So, the, clearing out those basements, make them open basements, so that there's, uh, no living space in the basement, even though there is a partial egress window in each one of these units. At this point, the egress window is just undersized from what our safe house, um, and we not looking to go to three-bedroom at this time, much more work at this time, but it'll be hopefully considered in long-term future with these buildings, uh, if we decide to look at basements and being, you know, finished, um, expand egress windows, that it would be accepted.
Um, Mr. Cyrus, um, Mr. Schreit, do you want to move to it, or just wait?
No, it's, uh, it is on the H F A.
One other thing, we're, we're aggressive about getting started on this, and this is kind of delayed, we've got quite a few estimates from our contractors, you know, our roofing, and our, all our stuff. Um, we know there's going to be a little more timeframe, because we're going to actually start pulling permits in this part of it. We do not plan on having to work on all thirteen units at one time, we're going to be working from one of the windows, building units all the way through, and we're probably looking at two or three units at a time, just needing, moving on to the next two or three. Um, I don't, we want to try and get bodies in there as soon as we can, because once again, it is an investment. Um, we take time, try and do all of them at one time, it's going to take way too much time, way too many vehicles out there for construction guys and everything else, and just get way too crazy for the way everything's set up. But, question is, on here, it does say, after the bid was accepted, that, um, certain occupancy must be occupied by November thirtieth of two thousand and twelve, because that was, just on your, on your city of Southfield bidding.
It was on the, the, uh, R F, R P, yeah.
Right, um, I believe I read in here, it says, certain occupancy, is that going to hold all, all thirteen units, or is on the, you know, within, hopefully within thirty days to forty-five days, we'll have the first two to three units, um, rent, or, excuse me, lease, um, to our client. Um, but, November thirtieth, I do not believe will get completely one hundred percent done by November.
Well, like a very...
Thank you. At this point, there is approximately going to be close to four hundred thousand, if not, that are put in this building. I don't know if you guys want to know that, but they are, they are, they are pushing, you know, for quality, and that's what we're looking for. We, we want to continue to be good neighbors, and, uh, get the project done, get them full.
Well, you'll get the approval tonight.
I'll say.
You'll get the approval tonight, because it starts tomorrow.
Well, we got to do the property, right?
You're going to do whatever you have to do to get your own...
Yep, starting to get our permits ful- uh, ready and prompt, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm going to let her speak, I think we're, we're not finished, is that, is that...
Um, any questions?
I, anybody else, because we're kind of behind the schedule here.
Mr. Mormons, anything else you want me to answer?
It's going to be great.
We believe you.
And you, I think you'd be proud of us, that's why, you can guarantee that.
Amen.
Um, the people are excellent, and you believe in us, now, church is that.
That's right, it is.
I'll agree with that, I've been there.
You'd be happy with that, for what you see, it's going to be fantastic.
Okay, uh, Ms. Rose, Ms. Rose, just, and this is...
Of course I'm here.
Okay, hold on one second.
Of course I'm here.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Yumi Rose. I live at two six four, seven seven Franklin Drive, at Stoneburg. Now, you need to hear some history, I wasn't angry before, but I'm angry now, because you kept me waiting for an hour and a half when I expected to be able to speak at five thirty, because that's what it said here. Now, let's have some history, and by the way, please understand, I have nothing against Christian Tabernacle, please understand. Going back to the year, the west I six ninety-six Ramford Building, the Franklin Orchard lost its entranceway on Franklin Road. We, Stoner, was asked, were asked by the city to allow a driveway on our property so that those residents there could find a way into their units. We were given some landscaping at our entranceway as a gift for our cooperation. Actually, we were not really given much of a choice. When developer Eppet wanted to build his medical facility adjacent to our office way, the plans we saw were unacceptable to us. Frankly, it looked like the good ship Lollipop coming in for landing right next to us. No new plan was made available to us, so the medical facility was built across the highway. We were pretty much castigated for being some obstructionist in this project. One, it was ugly to us, not within the architectural, uh, community. We would have had to put up a larger extra plan to clean to post for us. Yes, we were uncooperative on this. Well, friends, we had been mighty cooperative, and after I went and put in our property, we weren't in the mood to accept an ugly building next to us. Now, we could use some help. Let's flash forward to today. Times have changed, finally. We know all too well that the city has become the landlord of the empty Franklin Orchard. We know that many have come forward to buy it with awful revotes. Here's how we understand the current situation. Christian Tabernacle is the highest bidder for the property, with plans to rehab it and make it available to the residents. You all know the figures, I don't want to walk you through them. Now the city is happy because it's no longer landlord. Okay, fine. Human lives are problems. For the past few years of this economic tsunami, Stoner, like all other communities here, has had an influx of families with kids, mostly renters, who I'm really sorry to say do not exemplify the Southfield standard. Unfortunately, Stoner was not designed to handle this amount of kids. We have no playground, we have nothing for them, nor can we build a playground now that, because of the loss of, of revenue from defaulting co-owners. Now we have a buyer for Franklin Orchard. I am positive that Christian Tabernacle has the highest intention with this small improvement. However, have you thought of families with kids on this small part of town? Bet you're not. Have you thought of, of your kids filling onto Stoner's property? And how we can handle the extra kids? Have you considered making a play space for your kids? And if so, inviting our kids to join you? Bet you're not. I am certain none of these concerns made it to the negotiation table. Because nobody thought of any of this. Please understand, we are not adverse to having Christian Tabernacle as our neighbors. We just see real problems here. How can we solve the problems if we don't ask questions? Now we have a suggestion. I don't know. How about Christian Tabernacle offering this property to empty nesters, older folks, who would enjoy living at the apex of all that is cool about Southfield? Could be a good solution. We respect Christian Tabernacle as a fine example of beautiful places of worship in our community. We simply hope that you will consider the impact you'll have on our community. As a member of the Stoner Board of Trustees, I promise that whatever you all decide, we will do everything in our power to be good neighbors. We hope to say for Christian Tabernacle. One more thing. Not one single person, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say one more thing.
Hurry up.
You kept me waiting for an hour and a half.
You have five minutes.
You kept me waiting for one and a half hours, Madam President.
That's right.
I'm talking about the artists that were here. Not one single person at this table that, wow, we're gonna be global. Congratulations to the artists. I'm leaving. You can do whatever you want.
Uh, within comments that we made, as renters and landlords such, this is a leasing property, it's not something that people come in month to month, okay, we're gonna, you know, scam, right? They're leasing for years, a long period of time. Back to the openness of the clients, or, or we're gonna be living in here, the two-bedroom units. We're gonna have professional people in there, they are gonna be screened, there's not gonna be any riprap coming into this. Yes, we were looking at future plans, which we have kind of discussed, with on the other end of the property down here, is putting a playground in, clearing the field, putting a playground in for people who have kids in this area. We talked about this weeks ago, that they are separate from the rest of the community, okay? Yes, we don't expect that somebody has kids here to be going down here unless they got friends. You know, they have friends, kids go around the neighborhood, we can do that, we all did that. We did, we are looking at plans, which we will propose into the future, of a playground down at this end for the community of, um, of our, of our condos.
I encourage you to do that.
Thank you.